Hi, this is Andrew from NCTV. I have a connection and everything, so I'm all set on my end too, just to let you know.
We will begin, as we always do, by reading the mission statement. The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that needs our diverse students through school, family, and relationships. We provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and motivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Okay, Thomas Doyle, our chair, is unable to attend this evening, so as the vice chair, I will be doing my best to fill his wonderful shoes. We will begin our meeting tonight with the public comment period. Public comment is designed to allow anyone to come before the committee and provide comment on anything within the purview of the committee. It is not designed to be a back-and-forth dialogue. Generally speaking, the committee will not comment back on what was raised in the public comment period to avoid meeting law violations and avoid discussing items not previously noticed on our agenda. This evening, we have four individuals, I believe, who have signed up to provide public comment. Each participant will have three minutes to speak, so I will set my timer. I will notify you if you are over that timeframe, so please try to keep your comments within three minutes. Subsequent to public comment, we'll move on to the agenda items. So let me look at my public comment list. First individual to provide public comment will be Allison Masood, or Masoud, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your last name. Adrian, I believe, will unmute you. Just identify yourself, and then I will start the three-minute timer once I can see or hear you speaking, one of my trials. And I believe, Allison, you can unmute yourself.
Good evening, I'm Allison Masood, and I'm the mother of two children who attend Freeman Kennedy. I'm here to discuss my concerns that the mask mandate continues. First, my eight-year-olds do not want to wear masks. Along with most of their children, they have been mentally and emotionally impacted. They want to see their friends' faces and to have their teachers see them smiling. They expressed concern if their teacher didn't notice something was wrong. As one of my daughters said, "Kids' emotions are not just in their eyes. They might have emotions under the mask that people can't see." Another way this has affected my children is missing out on sports. I will not have them exerting themselves, unable to breathe freely, just to play basketball. It's sad that as parents, we are forced to choose and have them miss out. I'd like to suggest something else, since we are concerned with the health of our loved ones. Instead of kids believing that a mask is going to protect them, let's remind them that illness is inevitable. A lesson should be healthy living with proper nutrition and physical activity. Veteran forums about health at home and at school. For the sake of our future, we need kids to think critically and to be independent thinkers. I will not encourage my kids to simply go along with something when it does not make sense or feel right. What is this lesson that has been learned, and what can we take from this? We need to do better moving forward. The kids are looking to parents and teachers for guidance to try and make sense of this. Kids have been dragged through this for two years, and we must stop. Please consider that parents may have different views, and the mandates, and let us choose. Thank you.
Thank you. The next individual who has signed up to provide public comment is John Semes, or Seemas, I again apologize if I'm mispronouncing. John, you should be able to unmute your mic.
Okay. Is there anybody you can... There's a lot of digging that's occurring as people are meeting in. Can that be silenced before we continue on?
Unfortunately, I don't think we can turn that sound down.
Okay.
Adrian, get the mic.
All right. First off, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is John Seemas. I reside in Norfolk, Massachusetts, with my wife and two children, ages six and nine. I would like to start off by making a general assumption that all people on this call are here because we have a genuine concern air for our children and the town as a whole. Whether you're a lifelong resident or moved to Norfolk from another community, I think we can all agree on one topic. The reason we have stayed or moved here is because of the school system's repugation and commitment to a higher standard. Over the past two years, I've been proud to say that my children go to Norfolk schools, and I feel my children have been provided with a very good education despite the pandemic and all of its challenges. My wife and I feel we have been well-informed about changes and obstacles during this time, and have never thought for a second that our child's best interest is not at heart. I do, however, believe my opinion of things will change if the mask mandate for our children is not lifted at this time. We, as parents, guardians, and citizens of this community, have all done what's necessary to keep our town and residents safe with a vaccination rate above 90%. The CDC recommends the use of N95 masks as they are best protection for this virus, but the use of these masks and their effects have not been adequately tested on children. My children, on a daily basis, before walking to the bus stop, select their decorative piece of cloth with a string, also known as a mask, that may or may not be clean, may or may not have been washed, and probably has snot inside of it. The mandatory use of these masks is not necessary, effective, or even warranted based in current statistics and science. I am sick of having to tell my children to remove masks as they have been conditioned to believe they are necessarily needed to make sure they are safe. Other school systems in the area have decided to remove masks, such as Fox Barrow, Noah NKP, and many others following suit. The unknown is now known, and it's time to remove the masks and put them in the time castle for later generations to laugh at. We, as a country and a community, feel that it is okay to be gathered in small spaces in large events without masks, and even when instructed to follow the rules, we don't. But our children, who have been treated like little sheep because they are defenseless, have suffered the most. I don't know how anyone on this call could sleep at night knowing we continue to damage our children's social and emotional health. I can't imagine what my son feels like when he's trying to learn how to read and can only see his teacher's eyes. I can't imagine being in school and not knowing if someone is happy, sad, or angry. Can you? The CDC statistic on death of young adults under the age of 18 is very clear. You are more likely to be struck by lightning than have a terminal case of this virus as a child. The argument of protecting others may have held weight last year, and I support anyone who feels it necessary to wear a mask on their personal preference. But your preference should not be my mandate. As elected officials, your responsibility is to represent the majority of the people in which you serve. The choice, while some may believe is hard, isn't very difficult. The masks, not supported by data, just don't have a place in our school system. I want to remind the board, teachers, and administration, it is not my child's job to protect you. On the contrary, it is your job to protect my child. Do the right thing, get rid of the masks, let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seemas, sorry, I'm just turning my timer off. You were right on the money with your three minutes. All right. The next individual listed to speak is Katie Yanisak.
Hi, I'm... Hi. Okay. Hi, I'm Katie Yanisak. I have three kids in Norfolk schools. I also work in infectious disease vaccine human clinical trials. So I probably should start with a generic disclaimer that what I'm about to say are my thoughts and opinions alone and not promoted or endorsed or any of that stuff from where I'm employed or anyone I collaborate with. I think we all know how hard the past two years have been on our children. I'm not going to go into the nitty-gritty of how COVID affects children. I think everyone understands that kids have a very low hospitalization rate with COVID, and kids are hospitalized with other viruses that we've always lived with. I could bore everyone to sleep with the science of SARS-CoV-2 and viruses in the immune system, but I won't. Plus, I've learned that most people don't want to hear about the differences between B cells and T cells. But what I will explain is what having our children's lives returned to normal means to me. When the world was closing down in 2020, my work was ramping up. There was a lot of unknowns, but we switched from HIV research to SARS-CoV research in days. I spent most of the spring 2020 in a lab collecting as many samples from COVID-positive patients as possible to learn about this new virus, all while preparing for what we thought would be a monumental task, a COVID vaccine. By fall of 2020, when everyone else was just starting to open up, school was hybrid, I was in the thick of it, trying to stop the virus. I was working six to seven days a week, often leaving before my kids were awake and coming home at bedtime. I tripled my pre-COVID hours most weeks. The lab I worked for was doing what was previously a month's worth of work every single day in the fall of 2020, and we kept that pace up for months even after it was announced the vaccines worked. What got me through the months of unsustainable long hours, the nights my then-four-year-old would wake up just to see me once that day, and the "Mom, why are you going to work if the virus is dangerous?" Was knowing I was stepping up for my kids. I constantly had to remind myself I wasn't putting the world ahead of my children, but being a part of the solution to give them what they deserved, a normal childhood. We are finally able to give our kids their normal childhood back. A great doctor and scientist was quoted in the Boston Herald in October of 2020. If we, the vaccine, turns COVID-19 into a common cold, that is successful. Teachers and staff have had over 10 months to get vaccinated and four months to be boosted. Children over five have had three months to be vaccinated. The vaccine is amazingly effective against severe disease and hospitalization. Doctors now have treatments for COVID-19. According to the state's website, as of February 10th, 93% of Norfolk County was vaccinated. 85% of our children had one dose of the vaccine, and some of those unvaccinated have acquired natural immunity from infection. We know good-quality masks, N95 or KN95s, work even when only the wearer has one. Plus, masks, which most of our children are wearing, does not provide much protection against the Omicron variant. Those concerned are still able to wear good-quality masks if they want. Our children have been putting the well-being of adults in their lives first for almost two years. It's time for the adults to put the children first. Our children deserve normalcy. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, we have one more individual signed up for public comment. That is Melissa Brizzy.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Melissa Brizzy, I've been in Norfolk for nine years, and my son is a first grader at the H Olive Day School in Norfolk. These past years have been challenging, to say the least. We have had to adapt how we interact with friends, family, peers, and coworkers. Our children have been through situations that we have never had to, growing up. They have persevered in many ways better than adults, and they seem to have rolled with the punches quite seamlessly. That being said, I believe it's time we give our children their normal lives back, where they can interact with their teachers, their friends, and their peers, showing their beautiful faces and smiles. We owe it to them. We have all had mandates pushed on us, taking away our choices. Haven't we taught our children to make their own choices? The mandates contradict that lesson and also take away our rights as parents to decide what is best for our children. In this critical point in their lives, they're learning to read and observe their teacher speaking and trying to sound out words, and masks only add another obstacle to that learning. It has hindered it, and it's time to remove them. Some people have grown accustomed to wearing them, and maybe they make them feel more comfortable, and that's fine. But again, it should be their choice whether they want to wear them or not. The numbers speak for themselves. The virus no longer causes severe illness for the majority of people who will contract it, and from the start of the pandemic, children have not been greatly affected by it. Schools have not been shown to be a source of transmission. If our state, like most other states, already have made the decision to lift the mask mandate for children in schools, why should we allow a handful of people to decide for our children if they are still going to have to wear them? It's time to let our children be kids again and make masks optional. Thank you.
Okay. That will conclude the public comment period for this evening's remote meeting. I believe all four individuals had a chance to speak. Am I correct, Adrian? Okay, great. Fantastic. So we will move on to the next, the committee portion of the meeting. I'm going to preface opening the agenda just by noting real quickly that I see 166 participants in this meeting, which is, I think, perhaps a record for a school committee meeting in this town. I look forward to seeing all, see if we take out committee members present, plus Murphy Cable, plus Adrian, plus Ingrid. Look forward to seeing all 159 of you at our budget meeting on March 3rd, when we'll have a public hearing to discuss the fiscal implications of our requested budget for the next school year. Very important public interaction point we have in our school committee year every year, so please make time to attend if you can. That said, let me just get my agenda back up, and I will be, I believe we have the superintendent's report, so this is Ingrid's portion of the evening, as Thomas refers to it, so go for it.
Thanks, Madoria. And I just want to express appreciation and thanks to the school committee for holding this special meeting tonight. As you're aware, last week on February 9th, Governor Baker and the Commissioner of Education, Dr. Jeff Riley, announced that they would be lifting the mask mandate for public schools in the state of Massachusetts effective February 28th. And, you know, in order for us to be able to give answers to our community, the state has turned this back over to local decision, and we really wanted to have a chance to meet, discuss it, and have the school committee vote which direction we'll be moving forward and so that we could provide that information to families prior to the February break. So thank you for taking the time to coordinate this special meeting tonight. As you are aware, again, that the governor and the commissioner lifted the mask mandate, it will be effective on February 28th. I think it's important to look at some of the data points that they considered in making that recommendation. First of all, Massachusetts does have one of the highest vaccination rates in the country among young people. I reported a couple of weeks ago that we had 78% of the age-eligible students or children in Norfolk, ages five to 11, who had received at least their first dose of the vaccination. That is now at about 85% who have had the first dose, and we expect by the time we return from vacation after February break, there will be probably close to 80% that are fully vaccinated. That's a very high rate compared to other communities across the Commonwealth. Again, another factor they considered is that Massachusetts does have a very strong school COVID-19 testing program. Last week at our meeting, we voted to move forward with the voluntary surveillance testing, and that will, we registered with the state, we're receiving shipments of rapid antigen tests, and we will be distributing those hopefully the week after vacation to all of the students and staff members who signed up to participate in the weekly testing. So we will, we do, based on the registrations that we have today, expect that we're going to have strong participation in that program among people who are eligible to participate. You probably remember when we talked last week that if you've had COVID-19 in the last 90 days, you are not able to opt into this program at this time, and it is also only open for K through six, so preschool students are not eligible. But we do expect strong participation in the voluntary program for the members of our community that are eligible to participate. Additionally, Massachusetts has seen a significant decline statewide in new COVID-19 cases, and hospitalizations have been trending downwards. We've seen a similar decline in cases in the Norfolk schools post-vacation. Right after we came back in January, we were seeing fairly high rates of Omicron transmission, not within schools, but within the community. We were reporting 40 to 50 new cases a week, and that has steadily declined in the last two weeks, only reporting about 10 cases this week. So those, those numbers are trending in a very positive direction for our community. And then, as we've discussed as well, when we talked about the testing option, there's been extensive research done both nationally and locally in Massachusetts on school-based transmission of COVID-19. In Massachusetts, they have been looking at test-and-stay data, which test-and-stay is a program that we run in the school, where if a child tests positive for COVID-19, we conduct contact tracing, we identify any student that has been within 15, within six feet of the COVID-positive individuals for 15 minutes or more over 24 hours, and we notify those families. There are certain exemptions. Again, if you were masked in the classroom, you're exempt, but if you were unmasked in the cafeteria or you are identified as a close contact, you have to test daily for COVID-19 for a period of five days now, post-exposure. And based on looking at all the statewide test-and-state data, and again, those are people directly exposed through schools, the state's only identified a transmission rate in school cases of 2.9%, which is really very low. So that's another positive factor. Based on the governor's mandate, announcement that they'd be lifting the mandate, I did meet with the Norfolk Public Health nurses to review our local case data and look at the research. We've also met with our school-based medical team, and at this time, I would be recommending to the committee that we move forward with aligning with the state and the Department of Public Health's recommendation and going forward with masking being an optional choice for parents and families. The medical team and the public health nurses are in support of that recommendation. We do recognize that many of our students and staff may choose to continue with wearing a mask when they're in school. We have, based on the data, ordered KN95 masks that we would have available for any staff member who chooses to wear a stronger one-way mask when they're working, the students are working in the building. We have those in stock, we've received supplies, and have those available for staff members. We explored the possibility of purchasing stronger one-way masks for students, but at this time, there aren't any on the market that have been tested on children. So we would recommend to parents, if they are choosing to continue to have their child masked because they have risk factors at home or unique circumstances, that they consult with a physician as to the best one-way mask for their child. If the school committee does go forward and vote to support that recommendation tonight, then we will be working with our school adjustment counselors to put together resources with classroom teachers to facilitate discussions in classrooms. Recognizing that students will be making different choices, we want to make sure students feel safe making the choices that they do, and that we promote and continue to reinforce our values of kindness and respect and appreciation for difference throughout the district. I do want to just say that my recommendation tonight is based on what we know currently and current public health conditions. Should the state or the federal government issue additional mandates, obviously, the school committee would need to be convened or reconsidered, but I feel confident that at this time, it is the right time for us to move forward with considering a mask optional policy. So I am seeking a vote from the school committee tonight to lift the mask mandate for the Norfolk Public Schools effective Monday, February 28th, which would mean that when students are returning to school on the 28th, it would be mask optional. And again, this will align us with the recommendations in Massachusetts Department of Public Health, as well as the Mass Department of Education. Having to take any questions from the committee, in your packet, you have a copy of my recommendation, as well as some references, the state case rate data and COVID dashboard, the press release from DESI, and additionally, the DESI and DPH COVID protocols are in reference to your packet.
Ingrid, I just have a clarifying case. So they still, because it's a federal law, if we, if it goes optional, they still would have to wear a mask on the bus. Is that accurate?
Yeah, Jen, thanks for pointing that out. There are two circumstances where students would continue to have to wear masks in school. The federal order covers school transportation, so the state does not have governance over that. All students will continue to be required to wear a mask when they're riding the school bus or accessing any school-based transportation until the federal order changes. So all of our children will be required to mask if they're riding the school bus. And the second circumstance, if a child tests positive for COVID, we will be continuing to follow the DESI and the Department of Public Health guidelines for responding to positive cases. The new quarantine guidelines allow students, if they're fever-free for 24 hours and are seeing a significant improvement in symptoms, to return to school after five days of quarantine, but they would be required to mask for an additional five days if they return on day six. They have to mask from day six to day 10 while in school. So those are the two situations where students would be required to mask.
One more question, Ingrid. Do they have to wear a mask in the nurse's office? I thought that was considered a health.
Yes.
If they went down, like, I don't know, they bumped their...
The nurse's office, they would have to put a mask on.
Just that parents, if the child came home and said, "I had to put on a mask today."
Yes.
I just bumped my head that they understand that that's not even our law, that's...
No, that, you're right, that is part of the federal law.
I only remember all this because I had my own work call at five, where they went over all this stuff, so that's all.
Any other questions?
Okay, so we would be looking for a motion to accept the recommendation to make masks optional in alignment with the recommendations of DESI and the Department of Health.
So moved. So moved.
Second. Second. Third.
Any further discussion amongst the committee before we vote? Going once, going twice. All right, why don't we do, I believe technically, since we're meeting remotely, we have to do a roll call vote, so if we could just go down the line and cast your vote after you say your name.
Sarah Ward, yes.
Shannon Maneskes, yes.
Jennifer Nguyen, yes.
Madora Champagne, yes. Motion passes. Moving on to the next item on Ingrid's agenda.
And again, thank you for supporting the vote. I will be sending out in Wednesday's words tomorrow a letter informing parents of the decision, and it will also outline the specific circumstances under which students would be required to mask, so that will go well. Thank you very much.
I do, I would be remiss if I didn't point out, I know, Ingrid, it's in the packet in your recommendation, you know, this determination by the committee is based on existing circumstances and data. The world can change quickly, as we have all learned, and so as a result of that, this does not close the door on revisiting the topic in the future should circumstances change. So we are all on the same page. All right.
Thank you. The other item I wanted to review tonight in terms of health and safety protocols is the procedures we have for social distancing in the Freeman Kennedy Cafeteria. So I just want to start by saying, as a district, we've been very committed throughout the pandemic to ensuring that we provide a safe and healthy school environment for our children. We continue to maintain diligently our cleaning and sanitization protocols. We also have strong HVAC systems. We probably significantly exceed the recommendations for filter changing and replacement. We also have run them whenever the weather allows to bring in the maximum amount of outside air into the classrooms. All of our classrooms have capofiltration units in every instructional space that we run as well. And we continue to ask students and staff to monitor closely for COVID-19 symptoms and to remain home if they are not feeling well. Additionally, we're implementing the new surveillance testing, the optional testing. So circumstances are trending favorably as we, as a district and a state are moving past the spike of Omicron. I think in spite of the health and safety restrictions, I do want to say that our teachers have gone above and beyond and done an excellent job of trying to provide the greatest sense of normalcy for our students in the classroom. They found creative ways for students to work in partner groups and in small groups, to engage with the curriculum, pursue active learning, and they've really done an outstanding job. But I do think it's upon the committee to continually review our safety practices and identify areas where we may be able to lift some of these restrictions and support our students in moving forward towards a greater sense of normalcy. As I talked about in a prior memo, and we talked about earlier with regards to the masks, we're in a much better position now than we were when we first returned from vacation. The Department of Education has been closely tracking COVID-19 cases in the schools. In many communities, students are sitting together during the cafeteria, during their lunch period, in tables or in small clusters. King Philip was able to have students in the middle and high school sit at regular cafeteria tables this year. Obviously, they started this full year with a much higher rate of vaccination as vaccinations weren't yet available to the students in our age group, but even among districts that have had students eating together at lunchtime, there hasn't been a significant difference in terms of school-based transmission. So the test-in-state data I talked about earlier with the 2.9% of those context testing positive includes districts where students have been eating lunch together at regular cafeteria tables. Based on that data and based on the circumstances that we find ourselves in now as far as COVID transmission rates and community transmission rates and our local vaccination data, I think it's safe for us to consider transitioning and lifting the social distancing protocols that we have in place in our district health and safety plan and allowing the students at Freeman Kennedy to begin to sit together again at cafeteria tables in the lunchroom. I think that's an important social time for students. We also know our fifth and our sixth grade students, as they transition into middle school, will be navigating the cafeteria and navigating the dynamics of changing seating, and we do want to give them practice and experience with that. At the same time, we know some families may prefer to have their students remain seated in socially-distanced tables and desks. I anticipate that if the school committee votes to lift the social distancing restrictions, that Lisa and Piki would send out a survey to parents, and we would identify by grade level how many people would be opting for seating, setting in table groups, and who may require individual seating. And we would expect to have in the cafeteria a plan developed to offer both types of seating that would be subject to student choice. And to do that in a way, you know, that we would have some tables, we'd have some individual socially-distanced desks, and students would be allowed to make their own choices based on guidance from the parents and families. So I am seeking a vote tonight for the school committee to ease social distancing requirements during lunch at the Freeman Kennedy School. At this time at H. Olive Day, students are already seated at tables. We've limited the number of students at each table in order to provide social distancing, but that system's actually working really well for the younger students, so we're not looking for changes yet at H. Olive Day. And we have a much bigger cafeteria space, so we can have more tables in there to accommodate those students. So we are seeking a vote just to lift social distancing requirements at lunch at the Freeman Kennedy School at this time. We would, after that, if the committee supports that, like, monitor that for a while, and then we'll reconsider other kinds of restrictions that we might have in the whole settings. Having to take questions on that.
Ingrid, I just have a question, wondering if what we talked about with masks applies here similarly, that given what we know now, this is, if we make a decision to do X or Y, if we need to reconvene at any point, we will? Is that true?
Absolutely. Absolutely, and that's why we want to do this in stages. We could look at the cafeteria first because we have some good evidence across the state that that hasn't led to significant increases in transmission. I think in the cafeteria, by the time kids get through the lunchroom, the lunch line, get their lunch and get seated, they're really only at those tables for twenty minutes. So it's a shorter period of time, and we have some state data to rely on to make the decision on that. We want to see how that goes, make sure that we're monitoring things closely before making other changes district-wide. But yes, as we talked about with masks, I think anything, as I think the one thing we've learned from this pandemic is that it does change frequently, and we've had to adapt and we've had to shift, I think Mr. Seema had noted, you know, we have to shift and pivot constantly. So if circumstances change significantly and there's other guidance coming out from the state or from the Department of Public Health, we certainly would reserve the right to reconsider.
Great, thank you. Sure. Yeah, if there are no other questions for Ingrid, then we'd be looking for a motion to lift the lunch social distancing restrictions currently in place at the Freeman Kennedy School.
I make a motion to lift the social distancing requirements at Freeman Kennedy.
Okay.
All in favor, let's roll call vote again, since we're remote, please. I'll go first this time, Madora Champagne, aye.
Sarah Ward, yes.
Shannon Maneskes, yes.
Jennifer Nguyen, yes.
Okay, the motion passes.
So I believe on that, that it will take us some time to make that transition because all of our cafeteria tables are stored in shipping containers outside the building in the snow, so over the February vacation, we'd have to pull all those tables out, clean, disinfect, and we have to move and store all the desks that are currently in the cafeteria, and we do want to get some data back from the parents so that we make sure that anybody who wants individual seating or socially-distanced seating, we can accommodate. So it will take us a little bit of time to make that transition, and Lisa will communicate with Freeman Kennedy families to update them on that. So thank you.
Okay, I believe that concludes our working agenda for the evening. A reminder that our next meeting will be Wednesday, March 2nd, at Freeman Kennedy, correct? Freeman Kennedy. The public hearing on next year's school budget, which has some very critical needs contained within it, will be immediately prior to the meeting, and the committee will discuss on and vote on that budget recommendation in our meeting subsequent to that. So to close out this one, I just need a motion to adjourn.
Madora, I'll just put a plug in too, that if you do go to the budget meeting and you have children at Freeman Kennedy, that you can look through the Lost and Found as well, which is a bonus.
It looks like a store.
I planned someone remind me, but I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Wonderful.
Seconded.
Wait, all those in favor?
Aye.
Champagne, aye, yes, okay.
Shannon Maneskes, aye.
Sarah Ward, aye.
All right, thank you to everyone who dialed in. I, again, look forward to seeing you on March 2nd, and thank you to the committee, Ingrid and Adrian for coordinating everything. That was a big first Google meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.